Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Tola Martz, call the August 26, 2025 City Council Services Safety and Parks Committee to order. First up, we have an agenda, public comment. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight’s meeting. There’s a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation in council question and answer period on tonight’s agenda item. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who have signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you’re in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I will wait a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes, we do have someone here today with us, John Rittenhouse. And I’m waiting for virtual hands.
I’m sorry?
Sorry. I do not see any virtual hands at this time.
All right. Public comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. During audience comments, members of the public are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to city programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone or step to the lectern. State your name, address, and relationship to the city, i.e., resident, property owner, business owner. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior such as shouting, booing, clapping, or stomping feet will not be permitted. If the speaker is out of order, the presiding officer will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat, or, for virtual attendees, may direct staff to mute the microphone. If the speaker does not comply, the presiding officer may take a recess to restore order. If disruption to the meeting occurs and order cannot be restored, the presiding officer may proceed to use one of the options provided for in RCW 42.30.050 to ensure orderly continuation of the meeting. Again, public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. City takes comments seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. Clerk, will you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
I have John Rittenhouse.
John Rittenhouse, 260 Mount Olympus Drive, northwest in Issaquah, and I am a resident. And I would like to briefly speak in support of the administration’s recommendation to proceed with the building of the Opportunity Center without a currently identified tenant or service provider. My wife and I have lived in Issaquah for almost 35 years, and throughout that time we’ve seen the city as a regional leader in providing housing and services to all residents regardless of economic status. Issaquah has supported the efforts of At Work to provide employment opportunities for the developmentally disabled, Eastside Baby Corner, now KidVantage, to provide donated items for children and families, the efforts of Leo and Rose Finnegan and life enrichment options to provide adult and family homes to the developmentally disabled adults, the Issaquah Food Bank, Issaquah Community Services, providing cash assistance for struggling households, the YWCA by providing support for the construction of the YWCA Family Village in the Highlands, the Garage, a teen café that provides safe space for young adults to thrive, the Issaquah Hot Meals Program. I could continue, but I have a feeling you know where I’m going with this. Adopting the recommendation of the administration will allow the city to retain the flexibility to choose the most relevant service providers for the needs of Issaquah’s residents as the economic and political situation stabilizes enough to support the providers’ activities at this site. The current problem with filling the Opportunity Center’s services space might just be a timing issue. The fundamental plan for the use of that space is still sound. I received a degree in economics in 1980, and to get that, you couldn’t avoid taking a course in the economics of the public sector. One theme of that study has struck with me ever since, and I sincerely believe it to be true. In a capitalist economy, the function of government is to do those things that the private sector is unable or unwilling to do. The Opportunity Center is a project that could only be done with the support and the assistance of the city of Issaquah. Please support the adoption of the recommendation before you to maintain the flexibility you will need to help Issaquah continue to be a special place where people care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rittenhouse. Clerk, is there anyone else who has indicated a desire to speak at this time?
No, Chair, not at this time.
All right. Well, then, we will move on at this point. We do not have minutes, is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, because this is a special guest?
Yes.
Got it. All right. Well, then, we will move on to our one scheduled agenda item, COM 0172, Transit-Oriented Development Opportunity Center Options, and I believe is being presented by our own city administrator, Wally Bobkowitz.
Yes, Chair Martz, members of the committee, good evening. Fortunately, our team is not with us tonight, at least in person. Andrew Snyder, the deputy city administrator, who has taken the lead on this topic, is unfortunately home ill. But as you all know Andrea, she’s on the call. So she is not going to give the presentation this evening, but will be available for questions. Jeff Watling, our director, Parks, Brooklyn Community Services, is also online. I believe he is well, but he’ll also be available for questions. And Gillian Straub, our management analyst, who has been a real key staffer on this, is on her honeymoon, and so will be back with us next week. So with all that, you get me this evening to make the presentation. The purpose of being here is a follow-up from the July 22 Services Safety and Parks Committee. We presented an update as to where we are with the development of the Opportunity Center. The committee asked for some additional information about the tenant issues that we raised, and so this evening, we’re bringing back that information. Happy to answer additional questions, but hopefully, the committee will be making recommendations to the full council to act on next week at your September 2 meeting. Next slide. So the direction needed is should the city proceed with building the Opportunity Center without a currently identified tenant service provider, or should the city pull out of the agreement with KCHA to build the Opportunity Center? Next slide. Recommendation of the administration, based on the additional work that we have done and consistent with this project, being a very important one for the community, is that we proceed with building the Opportunity Center while recruiting for tenants and service providers. This is the current direction, so there is no negative action required or affirmative action if you choose to move forward with this recommendation. But we believe that it’s important to move forward, and so that is our recommendation this evening. Next slide. Again, the feedback that we received from the July 22 meeting, we presented several options. The preferred alternative was, in the absence of contracted partners, to pursue a variety of smaller service providers to share. The committee, at that point, expressed a preference for option one, but expressed concerns over the risk of having vacant space and wanted to discuss further before the permit window narrows to city decision-making timelines. And as we reported in July, that timeframe is the first part of September, so hence the reason we are here with a special meeting this evening. Next slide. The timeline, I think you’re familiar with. I don’t want to go into details, but clearly, the project is moving forward at a pace that it has not for some time. And so with this last decision regarding the Opportunity Center, King County Housing Authority is prepared to move forward, and the city would do as well with the issue of service providers. Next slide. So in kind of managing this idea of risk, the city staff put together tours of both Together Center and the Skyway Resource Center, discussions with the Sunrise Neighborhood Center and consultant state officials regarding the funding that informed our risk analysis. We looked at risks for two ways, without a service provider, the two main groups, service provision risks and financial risks. Next slide. There’s a lot of details on these slides, and if Deputy City Administrator Snyder was here with you, she would go through every specific point here. Let me take the opportunity to summarize, and we can certainly double back with more details on some of these pieces. We feel that we should move forward, that in talking to our various regional partners who have done similar work, they assure us that there are plenty of providers that would like to have that space. They have the ability to pay not large amounts of money, but enough money that we think that will allow us to move forward and make this operationally make sense. The financial risk of pulling out, certainly, there’s the money that has already been granted to us by the state of Washington, which would be at risk. We feel that we need to continue to move forward there. Next slide. We’ve looked at the ability to use the affordable housing tax funds, which was another risk that was discussed, and we feel comfortable that we can use those funds if, for some reason at some later point, that built-out space is used for other purposes. We believe that there are sufficient means for us to generally address the use of that money. And then the ability to use the state funds, as I’ve indicated, we really need to move forward now to make sure that those monies are in hand. Next slide. The service risks, again, we’re not sure what that mix would be. In the work that we’ve done since meeting with you on July 22, it’s very clear that the need exists, that it’s very clear that there are partners out there that would be able to fill the space, but at this point, we do not have the ability to contract with those partners so early on. I think what we’ve heard from the partners is that if the space is available, then they’re willing to talk. This idea of contracting for space that has not yet been constructed is just very difficult. I mean, all of these agencies are facing tremendous, tremendous financial challenges. But services are still required. There are still funding streams coming to these organizations. But if there was a model several years ago where they could commit to space prior to construction, that time has gone away. So we feel comfortable that should the city council decide to move forward, there would be organizations that would want to do that. In addition, we have worked with our Human Services Division with the city, and they also believe that we could provide services there ourselves. That might make sense. But certainly, looking for partners that are already established, that have that infrastructure, that have those connections in the larger community is, will remain our first priority. And as we move forward with this, we’ll continue to work to identify those individuals. I think we’ve covered most of those points. Next slide. Again, reiterating the lessons learned over the last month from our peers, creative and flexibility is required. As I’ve talked about, below-market rental rates will be needed, larger tenants can subsidize smaller ones. And again, I think what we saw with all of these is a mix. Certainly, the Opportunity Center is a great example of a whole variety of different sizes and shapes of organizations. And I think that while our space is not nearly as much as the Opportunity Center is, we still feel confident that if the project is built out, that we will find tenants there. Next slide. Again, next steps, this is the time to make the decision. If the council is uncomfortable with the information that we’ve provided, now is the time to direct the administration to extract ourselves from that space and have additional discussions with KCHA on the use of that space. Again, we feel comfortable at this point moving forward. We have available resources to front for the build-out, and we will continue to work diligently over the next year or two to identify service providers so that once that space is available, that it will be occupied and will serve residents of Issaquah. I believe that’s the last slide. Direction needed, again, asking for confirmation of the current direction, which is to proceed with building the Opportunity Center without a currently identified tenant or service provider. If the committee, whatever the committee’s decision this evening, we ask that we bring it to the September 2 council meeting for confirmation. That will then allow us to move forward with the larger project. I’m happy to answer any questions. Deputy City Administrator Snyder, as well as Director Watling, are also online and happy to answer what I am unable to.
Deputy Counsel, President Di Michele.
So one of the hang-ups, I imagine, when we’re talking to potential renters, is that we don’t have what the rental rates would be, what the square footage is that’s available, all of those facts that people need in order to make a business decision. So where in the timeline do we think we’ll be able to come up with that information for potential renters?
Deputy City Administrator has turned her camera on. Good evening, Andrea. I’ll let you take that one.
Thank you, Wally. Good evening, council. We are looking to issue an RFP for potential tenants in October. Between now and then, we’ll be working with KCHA, King County Housing Authority, on some kind of ballpark terms that can help us generate interest. And then, throughout the winter into spring, we anticipate working with KCHA on a condominium agreement and a purchase-and-sale agreement that we will be able to use to help understand where ongoing maintenance costs are of the building, and then simultaneously work with our tenants on a lease contract with them. So that work, we anticipate really starting in the next few weeks, but then getting more and more details through the spring as we’ll work on a condominium agreement and our leases.
Thank you, Andrea. Turn off your camera and relax. Sorry you’re not feeling well.
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Can you refresh me on the size of the Opportunity Center and what we estimate the cost to be when all is said and done?
Andrea, I’ll let you grab that one as well.
Sorry about that, Andrea.
Thank you for the question. The size is 10,000 square feet. So compared to the other centers that we looked at, the Together Center is somewhere like 55,000 square feet. The Skyway Resource Center is like 5,000, and the Sunrise is like 6,000. So we’re really in between some of the examples that we looked at, and I think that’s an advantage for the Opportunity Center as we seek tenants. The other question you asked, how much do we think it’s going to cost? Final numbers are not in yet from KCHA. Our current estimate, just for acquisition, not for all the tenant improvements, just for acquisition, we think is going to be $6 to $7 million. And then tenant improvements over that. We do believe we have sufficient funds set aside when we take into account the affordable housing sales tax revenues we’ve been collecting, as well as the state grant to provide for acquisition and tenant improvements.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
City Administrator Bobkowitz, can you go back to the slide that’s titled “July Page 17 of the packet, “July 22, SSP Feedback.” I don’t know which slide it is in the presentation. There we go. So my question for city administrator is, what’s the effective difference between options one and option three?
Well, I think at July 22, we were hopeful that maybe we would have some idea of providers identified in the month that has just passed. And so we do not. And so part of being here this evening is to let you know that we do not. So really, option one, in some respects, comes out off the table. I think we’ve just kept it since it was option one, the one to focus on, but I think they’re the same thing at this point as we sit here at the end of August.
But really, most accurately, the option that you are recommending is option three.
Yes. And Andrea?
If I may, Councilmember Martz, as you may recall, at the July 22 committee meeting, we presented these options and said the current plan is to get one tenant. And that was the idea with the Together Center, is that we would have Health Point and Valley Cities working in partnership to be our single tenant providing services. We’re still pursuing that model. If we can find a single tenant, that’s kind of our first option. Given that that’s our first option, July 22 was a conversation where we were exploring what other options or a Plan B should we examine? And part of that Plan B is, if we can’t find one tenant, are we willing to look at a couple of smaller tenants together that may have more rotating services, that may require more staff management of the center? And so that was the difference between our preferred path, which is similar to the original vision, versus a couple of other tenants. Option number three that you see on this slide is, if council wanted to proceed with that one tenant, if council was not comfortable with the administration perhaps providing more management of the center, that would be required with multiple tenants. And so that’s the difference between one and three, is that maybe we build it and we wait for that one tenant instead of trying to have multiple tenants and maybe rotating services that are a little bit more city resource-intensive to manage.
Thank you for that clarification, because I would have never, ever gotten that from just looking at the slide. So thank you. So there’s really probably, is there also then a sub-question in there? Are we, like, do we want to proceed with not having an identified service provider? And are we also hung up on having a single anchor provider?
You know, council, Chair Martz, members of the committee, if the committee feels strongly about that, sure. I think the message you’re hearing from us this evening is that we’re going to continue to work diligently to come up with the best plan possible. And it may have various flavors, various pieces to that, but we would like the flexibility to continue to do that. If you feel, from a programmatic standpoint, that one main tenant is the only way to go, then certainly would that be useful to know. But I think what we’ve learned over the last several months is that that’s probably not very practical right now, even if that’s the ideal, because they just don’t exist. And so what we would like to commit to do is find the best solution. And if we do find that one that can manage this and the city’s, in essence, a pure landlord, then great. If the city has to provide some coordinative services to make this all happen, then that’s fine, too, but there will be some small additional expense to that. We don’t know, but we need to decide, are we going to do this or not? And again, the recommendation of the administration this evening is, let’s do it, and we’ll figure it out, the best way to provide the services once the space is constructed.
Okay. But I’m also hearing that it would be nice that you’re also recommending that we be clear about being flexible on how you fill that space.
Certainly. Or I guess almost in my mind is, are you unflexible? Because we’re going to default to flexible.
Sure.
But if you feel programmatically that it’s really important, then that clarity would be helpful this evening.
Right. Thank you. Do we have any other? Councilmember Ray.
Thanks. You kind of triggered a thought, which is, do we have a preferred type of service provider we would like to attract? And the reason I ask is, when we first went down this road eight years ago, we were looking at a healthcare provider, and that was a more expensive option than just general office space or for other service providers. And so I’m kind of curious, are we still, is that still the desired outcome? And is that reasonable? And because my underlying question here is, do we need to incur the expense to build out the infrastructure to support medical offices, which is significantly higher than other commercial real estate, which is what this is? Do we need to do that? And if so, okay. And if not, and that’s okay, too, I’m just kind of curious what your thinking is in terms of where we’re going, because that was the original plan.
If I may, City Administrator Bobkowitz, the funding that we have for this space has specific uses attached to that funding, and the majority of the funding really requires behavioral health service providers. We can also, as originally planned for this space, provide low-cost medical services, including dental services, as was originally planned. So we’re still seeking providers to provide certainly behavioral health services, as well as sliding scale or affordable medical or dental services.
And the commitments we’re asking at this point of the council do not include the ultimate tenant improvements. And so, you know, as Andrea has indicated, the medical services would be light intensity. We’re not talking about anything that would require extensive plumbing or extensive electrical. So if it turns out, again, if we find a dental provider, let’s say, the normal tenant improvements that would then come later could certainly accommodate that.
Yes, I agree. And I’m kind of going the opposite direction, which is, you have to build a more robust infrastructure to support those down-the-stream tenant improvements, and that is a more robust infrastructure that is not required for things like mental health counseling. And I’m trying to figure a way to maybe reduce the cost, because right now, quite honestly, we’re coming in $1,000 a foot, which is really expensive. It’s really expensive, if you look at kind of what it costs to build real estate. So I’m trying to understand why it’s so high.
And I think that’s a different kind of question. So Andrea, why don’t you take a stab at that? If we’re just doing the simple arithmetic of square foot divided by estimated cost, why we get to where we get?
Yeah. The six to seven million estimate that we have from KCHA includes the parking as well and kind of basic construction costs and our share of the overall building envelope. So it’s, we can follow up with KCHA and get a more detailed cost estimate, but that’s the ballpark estimate that we have right now.
Okay. I don’t want to beat a dead horse, and I guess we’re in question, so I’ll stop beating the horse.
And Mr. Chair, Councilmember Ray, we’re happy to take some additional questions. We don’t have the full complement of staff with us 100% tonight, so if there’s some additional questions, we can bring back to the full council. Andrea, I think we’ll just go ahead and take that as an additional question, and with the materials we provide the full council, we’ll have a more complete answer.
That’d be awesome. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Hearing none, we are at the second op- Hearing none, we are at the second opportunity for public comment. So, I will ask again if any members of the public that are either with us this evening or watching from home wish to comment at this time. Now would be a good time to raise your virtual hand or your literal hand, and let us know. Are we seeing any indication that anyone participating remotely or locally would like to use the second opportunity to speak to us?
No, not at this time.
All right. Well, then, we will...
Oh, sorry. We do have a member here.
You spoke too soon.
Yes.
Yes, please.
I'm just wondering, listening to this discussion, comparing it to what I think I know about the Together Center model, that maybe a majority of the costs of the development for Health Point was actually paid by Health Point? Yeah. So, that's probably something that needs to be taken into account, that, at least in the Together Center model, extra build-out in order to support the tenant's core function was paid for by the tenant. And I'm sure that there was some sort of background combination of different funds that the tenant received in order to do that build-out. Because for Health Point, yes, it was very, very expensive. But if I remember correctly, I don't believe the Together Center itself contributed to that build-out. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Deliberation? You're volunteering.
I'd love to go first. I was just going to write some little talking points, but I think I'll just ramble instead. I'm in no way opposed to providing space for human services providers in Issaquah. I think it's a great idea. I guess what my pause is, is can we provide more for the same money? And that's why I'm kind of drilling into the cost per square foot. Is there a more cost-effective way than this particular option? And I know we've been pursuing this for a long time, but the cost of it has also escalated dramatically in that time. And if you look at just the benchmark construction cost for even a healthcare facility, it's something like $450 to $500 a square foot. And that's with, probably with TIs, I don't know, tenant improvements. But we're also talking about 700-plus, $700 per square foot plus in this current thing. So, I guess what I'm really looking for is, great, we need it, the need is clear, we should move forward, we should find a tenant, all of those things are absolutely, I just don't know that this is our best, you know, best option. It's an option. I just don't know it's the best option for us. And so, that's what I'm, that's the question I'm trying to wrestle with right now, is, what's the best way to meet this need in the community and provide the most capacity at the most reasonable price?
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President DeMichele.
All right. Thank you. Well, bear with me, I've got quite a few notes here. So, I favor the administration's recommendation for maintaining the city's commitment to the Opportunity Center and pursuing as best we can in the coming months, finding a tenant for that location. But if that is not possible, I really liked the suggestion that we could also move the Human Services Division into that space as an interim solution. I thought that was an excellent idea. We want to go back to the original idea, which was, we're going to provide affordable housing for low-income residents, and that's going to be coupled with, very much like the Together Center model, that's going to be coupled with Human Services provision located on-site. So, when we talk about other alternatives, we have to be thinking about, well, where would be the other alternative? And how would that benefit the people who are in this proposed low-income housing? So, basically, the idea was, it has to be on-site, it has to be in this location, it has to be something accessible here, also accessible to the transit, because it is a transit-oriented development, also transit-serving low-income people, many low-income people. So, this location is absolutely perfect for what we're proposing. And our long-term vision on this has been that that would be the model. We would provide something in the realm of 250 affordable housing units, and I believe it's five units for developmentally disabled folks. And then, we would have places very accessible for them to access the healthcare and the support, the behavioral health support that they need. I'm going to go back again, that was the original vision that we were talking about eight years ago. At that time, I had just, I think, I believe I was still a member of the Together Center Board, and I was in conversation with Health Point at that point, and asked them, and I think I used the statistics the night that this was approved, how many of their residents or how many of their patients were coming from the Issaquah area? And they estimated about 25% of their patients, of their overall patient load, was coming from Issaquah and adjacent communities to the south and the east of us. So, that's a large number of people who have to drive 15 to 20 miles to access healthcare that's being supplemented through Medicaid, which is an essential need for low-income people. It still is, nothing has changed in the last eight to nine years. There has been no health providers added in the area in the last eight to nine years. So, this location, again, is just perfectly positioned to take that market of people who need those particular services and provide them here in Issaquah, which is a really key place, we're at crossroads, it's exactly the right place that we should be locating it. In terms of the risk, I did do an informal survey with many of our service providers, and I did talk to people leading those agencies, who said, yes, they are indeed looking for space in the coming months. It was a reminder to me that even in the worst of times, and we are in really volatile times for nonprofits and health and human services providers, even in the worst of times, people are looking to expand. Why? Because this is also the time when people really need health and human services. And so, I believe that we will be able to find people to fill that spot. But if we don't, I love the idea of the Human Services Division being moved into that space, even if it's temporarily. Right now, they are in a very small house right over here. They've turned it into a very nice, very cozy place, but it is small, and they are cheek to jowl in there. And so, if indeed we were not able to find someone immediately, I think that moving the Human Services Division into the Opportunity Center would be absolutely a brilliant idea. They're already providing human services to low-income people. They're perfectly positioned. Again, we have our homeless specialist outreach people there. Again, a great place for them to be would be close to that transit center. So, we have some really viable options here for that location. And so, I think that, looking at the research that was done, which I really thank our staff for doing, I am very much supporting our going ahead with the Opportunity Center, with the hope that we will find a major tenant. But if we do not find a major tenant immediately, that we have alternate plans that I think are also very viable. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I want to thank Councilmember Ray, as always, for having a careful eye on following the money and understanding the implications, the financial implications of things. I'm going to miss him on council when he is no longer here next year. I can say confidently that we have turned over every rock, have looked behind every nook and cranny in this city to find good options for these sorts of human services. In the early years, this issue was percolating right at the surface the year that I was first won a seat on council, 2009. And we thought it was going to be easier than it turned out to be. And we looked at option after option after option. I could go through the town with a map and paint it red with the ink of all the places that we looked at that turned out not to work for a human services campus. And some of them just broke our heart, because we got to a point where we're like, oh, this will work! And then it didn't. So, and I have seen nothing in the eight years that we have been talking about this facility that makes me think that the market has changed in any way that would allow us to consider a different location for this. I don't know about the $700 an hour, or $700 per square foot. You know, if we can get some supplemental information that would help understand that and explain that to the public, that would probably be a valuable thing. But I am excited this evening to move forward with the administration's recommendation. And I also, you know, I wanted to clarify, I am fine with whatever mix of human services providers we need to get. Initially, I have confidence that our city will come up with a good mix, and that will be a benefit to the residents, both in that facility and in our larger community. Councilmember DeMichele.
Oh, thank you.
Deputy Counsel President DeMichele.
Thanks. Just to follow up on your remarks to the statement that they had in the packet, let me go back here. Creativity and flexibility are required to provide needed services. And having served on the Together Center Board for 10 years, and I really want to acknowledge that John Rittenhouse has served on the Together Center Board much longer than I did, we saw creativity and flexibility in motion. And the outcomes are positive, but it does take some ability to adjust to what the market needs, what the clients need, what the people who are running the operation need. All of those things need to be very flexible. And then, you can reach, and everybody being, let's say, honest partners in the process, and you could get to some really, really wonderful things with that process. But you do have to be thinking flexibly over time and with a long-term vision, like we've talked about. So, I just wanted to add that, that will be part of the process that we will be going through as this develops.
Yeah. Councilmember Ray, you have a quizzical look on your face. Would you like to share any further thoughts?
No, I just don't want us to sell ourselves short. I mean, I think, I understand your point, I agree with 100% of what you said. I heard your point. I don't have the data, so I can't refute that there's no other options. I just think that focusing on one thing to the exclusion of everything else can lead to suboptimal decisions. And I don't want us to not get the most we can for the money we're going to spend. So, like I said, I am 100% on board with spending $7 to $10 million on a human services facility. I just don't know that this is where I would spend it. So, before I say, yay, 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 let's go do this one, I want to know that I don't have any other options that are better.
So, my question for you then, is, in getting the sense of this body, I mean, we're not taking a formal vote today, but, you know, is the sense of the body sort of two to one on this issue?
I don't, I'll be really honest with you, and I think that was the perplexed look you were seeing, was I don't know. I don't know how I feel. I mean, if we, if this was the September council meeting and we were doing a vote, I don't know how I would vote, quite honestly. But I just don't want us to, like I said, I just don't want us to sell ourselves short. We don't get many bites at the apple, you know, take a big one. So, I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing to move this forward, that we're getting, because this is a lot, this is a lot more than we started with. I mean, it started as a $3 million problem, and then it became a, you know, a $5 million problem, and then a $7 million problem, and that probably is a $10 million problem. So, like I said, if we're going to solve the problem, let's get the most bang for our buck. So, that's all I'm asking for.
So, I will then turn to the City Administrator and ask the question, which is always the question, which is, have you received the information from this body that you would like, or would you like me to try to parse it a little further here?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, we would like a recommendation to the full council. Before you consider that, perhaps I can address Councilmember Ray's points a little bit. We're still in the process of sorting out who will the tenants will be. And it's our expectation that there will be financial participation from those tenants. And so, that will increase the revenue that's coming to the city, and I think change some of the equations as to cost. We'd also like the opportunity to go back to KCHA over the next week or so and get more clarity. Admittedly, we are not 100% in your staff support this evening, so we do not have all of the answers we would otherwise like. We feel pretty confident, though, that between now and next week, we can have those answers. I would imagine this will be on the council's regular business agenda, and so, we will make sure that we address Councilmember Ray's points. The administration agrees 100% with Councilmember Ray, that we want to make sure that these dollars are best spent and the dollars we're spending equate to appropriate services to be provided in return. So, we need to show our homework a little bit more than we're able to this evening. We will do that a week from now. So, Councilmember Ray, you have our commitment in that regard, but we would like to get a recommendation from the committee to the full council.
Thank you for that clarification. So, Deputy Counsel President DeMichele?
So, City Administrator Bob Quitz, if this is not what you want, please let me know.
We could put the slide back up, too. That'd be helpful.
Okay.
Cassidy?
Let's see. Let me get to it.
You returned the end.
So, the recommendation would be to agree with the administration's, excuse me, our recommendation would be to proceed with building the Opportunity Center without a currently identified tenant or service provider.
That's correct.
Is that correct? All right. But are we allowed to, is that a motion, or are we allowed to take a vote?
It's a recommendation from the committee, absolutely.
All right.
Do you wish to make a motion at this time?
Oh, I just, yes. I just did.
Oh, you did? Okay. That was, okay. I just wanted to make sure, I thought it was phrased as a question, but all right. I think we all understand that you are motioning
Yes.
to move forward with the administration's recommendation.
Exactly.
Are we ready to proceed to a vote? All right.
Do you need a second? Oh, okay. All right.
You don't need a second?
Not if it's coming from committee, it's fine.
Parliamentarian? No, you don't. All right.
Tishasong.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries three to zero. Thank you.
Can I just make a kind of a
Please.
post-vote comment?
Please do.
I am anxious to see what the administration brings to the full council, and I am looking forward to another spirited discussion.
I will deeply miss the, and I'm not trying to, I mean, I will deeply miss your rigor in these conversations, Chris. With that, I believe we are done. Any announcements from anyone? Therefore, we are adjourned at 7:19 PM.